Here.
John.
Here.
Sarah.
Here.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion for the Senate agenda. Will you approve?
I'll second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Public input, this is a time and place where discussion items not already on the agenda, but the time limit is three minutes each. Ready? Ms. Langley. Discussion possible action on lights at City Park.
So as you hopefully saw my email today, we were able to get about thirty thousand knocked off of the original quote, so it's from three ten one fifty-one down to two seventy-nine seven oh-two. That's with our discount and the temporary lighting. By going with them with that temporary light, we paid and they discount us on if we put in one of their systems. I know my, I hope you all could understand, so there's actual cash value and the depreciation fee. So what we received from insurance so far was the two hundred ninety-nine thousand. And so the thought is after the, we can put this whole project in, so we're the baseball field, that's the new bid, softball field, not doing anything with the little league field, which is Diamond Four. The insurance money we'll collect is three eighty-two nine eighty-four ninety-five. The actual cost to put in the new would be three fifty-nine, so there'd be a surplus there of twenty-five to thirty thousand. That would include that five thousand a pole figure on the high end if we didn't get volunteers, and that was the maximum amount per pole for installation. So this bid, the two seventy-nine seven oh-two is just Musco for the materials being brought to Lisbon. And then in my email I mentioned about the, they can have volunteers, we'll get a couple of community volunteers from the school, we'll have the equipment there to lift the stuff off the truck. This Jason from Musco will kind of coordinate putting it together, and then when the electrician's there with the crane, we'll set the poles. And the thought is, one day or weekend you do one field, one day or weekend you do the other field. So that's where the setting the crane and the electric, electrical work would be a maximum of five thousand a pole. I'm sure we can get it done way cheaper than that, but the three fifty-nine was at the maximum, right? So. I don't know if you have questions or if you didn't understand anything what I put in here, but there's also a ten thousand dollar option, five thousand per field, where you can have a system that's monitored twenty-four-seven, so Musco will call you and tell you when they're light out and when you have to look. And then they'll, they'll bring their tech out to do it. You can also shut the lights off and turn them on on your phone. The school has that for the football field, so it would be my recommendation if the school wanted that luxury to let them purchase that, because we don't need that, in my opinion. But just so you guys are aware, I mentioned it last time, it's twenty-five a year warranty, maintenance free, it will cost zero dollars for anything for twenty-five years. The only thing that doesn't cover is act of God or vandalism, which insurance will cover. And then some of the other benefit would be the better, better lighting than what, even, even this reduced lighting is better than what we currently have there. And again, this is a high school athletic association approved for their foot candles and then the glare, so the houses in that area won't, you won't be lighting up the side of the house anymore.
What about Diamond Four?
So Diamond Four, what we can do is get a couple of the new fixtures, or a couple of used fixtures we have from Springville, we can go take the lights, because we used a couple on softball, so we didn't have to have two stationary temporary lights. So what we can do is put the fixtures, used fixtures up on Diamond Four. And then the thought is, when we move to that next phase of the sports complex, that diamond is going to go away anyway. So what we'll do is take the light poles down at that time, and then hopefully move them to the, to the new, to the sports complex, along with all the other poles.
Okay.
And that five thousand is also removing the poles from the existing diamonds.
So we're replacing all the lights at the baseball field and all the lights at the softball?
Correct.
Brandy?
Brandon. Steel poles.
Yep.
Yep. It'd be very similar to the ones at Ice School on the football field.
Okay.
So there'll be four lights at running field and eight at the baseball field.
And it's all covered by insurance?
Correct. Now, and why, well, the price is higher, the reason why is, we've already been paid forty-eight thousand for Diamond Four.
Right.
But I don't recommend putting any money into that because that's not going to be there forever. So it seems silly to spend that money. So some of this money you receive for Diamond Four is going to go into Diamond, the other diamonds for this lighting project, so that's why.
Yeah.
That's the difference.
Any questions, Juan? Any motion?
I'll move to approve.
And just do the two seventy-nine seven oh-two, just the Musco contract, and then we'll bid for the electrical, all that.
Okay.
Is that what your motion is?
That's what my motion is.
I second.
Your motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Discussion, discussion and possible action on Phase One's sports complex.
Do we have to roll call that again?
No.
I'm sorry.
It's not revolutionary.
Okay.
So, sorry, did you already read that? Okay. Kalissa's tabled from the last meeting. Obviously with the storm, we couldn't talk to Lisa, but also Lisa is here in person from YTT. And did all of you, I printed off this so you could kind of see it a little better, I also put it in email. It really kind of helps see what all kind of goes together. Lisa, go ahead.
Can you guys survey if I just talk like this? I color-coded this, because I feel like it's a lot easier to see where the money, the breakouts going.
I'll just.
So I color-coded the actual cost breakdown to help you guys better understand where the actual items are going, so you can see what part's going to be the infrastructure for utilities, for sanitary water, for storm, just so you can get a better feel of where things are and what the costs are. So I went through and color-coded that, that's the front here, and this is my budget right now. And then on the second page, after I went through and wrote it out by the different categories, I still listed some of the items that I had talked to Brandon about and the city engineer about possible items to build out separately, to give some local contractors some opportunities for sidewalk work. And we could even possibly look at breaking out some other infrastructure work, storm water, water main. We could break it out into individual pieces if there are local contractors that were specifically trying to give an opportunity to bid on smaller projects. So that is an option we can do. And then I also went down at the very bottom of page two, and I went through, and these are additional cost saving items that we could look at to just bring the cost down on the project. And these are the brainstorming items that I had, and I went and put, ran some calculations and did the estimations on them. They include things like not extending a storm sewer over to the west. And we were extending it to the west in preparation for next phase, for next future expansion of the project, just putting the pipe in now so it's ready to go, so you don't have to go back and do that later. Don't necessarily have to do it now, you're probably going to, in the long term, you're probably going to save money if you did it now, but if the money isn't there right now, we could break it out and do it later. Other things we talked about would be changing parking lot to like a chip seal or a tar and seal, and possibly even not even putting curbing gutter in the parking lot, and those would be, that would be a significant cost savings. The downside to that is the lifespan of the parking lot will be reduced. I think if you do a tar and seal, probably talking seven to ten years max on that surface. It's just not as durable as concrete. So you're going to save now, but we're going to deal with it later in maintenance costs. Another item we looked at, we could possibly remove some subdrain. We actually have subdrain going down both sides of the road, and that's a typical design for a city street. We just put a perforated subdrain on either side of the shoulder. It helps maintain the pavement for longer. We could look at only putting it on one side, just based on the way the grading is, so that is an option to save, you know, somewhere around fifteen thousand dollars. Not doing irrigation and not even including it, or, well, we are going to put it as an alternate, so even if the price is coming high, it would just be something that we just would do later for an irrigation system. That could save some of that amount. We could switch some of the storm sewer to a plastic instead of a concrete. Right now, all the storm sewer is concrete, reinforced concrete pipe, that is the public standard for city streets, so that's why we're using it. But say in the parking lot, we don't necessarily have to use it there, we could go to maybe a plastic storm sewer system, save a little money on that. And then two other ones that I wanted to bring up is, the way we currently have the water main designed, we have the water main going up and over and down, like a big loop for all, for basically following the three streets, just going like that. One option we could look at is actually looping it over to West Third, but we have to go through people's driveways and we have to go to, and connect it over to the side street. So instead of looping it down there, we could loop it over there. Distance is a little shorter, so you may be saving, but we have a lot more impact to residential properties, driveways, maybe basically put everyone's driveways back in. So we have that cost, we're going to rip up their driveways, their street, so a lot of impacts on that side. So there is a slight cost savings, but there is a huge impact to those properties and inconvenience to them. And then the other one that I have on here, which could, we could look at is, we have the sanitary sewer currently being a gravity-fed system, which is ideal, that's, that is what we prefer, so that the sewer system just runs by gravity. So you flush a toilet, there's no pump, there's no force main, there's no lift station. Long term, that is your least maintenance. The city has nothing more than maintaining pipes and sewers. We could look at taking it and shooting it also over West Third towards the east and connecting it into that storm sewer system, but we probably are going to have to put in some sort of a, like a small lift station, which we understand that there are some of them in the city. But once again, that's something that now you have, something you're going to have to maintain more, it's going to have more maintenance costs in the future versus a, just a gravity main. So those are the options I came up with to try to get the cost down. Another big option, if really we are like, we have to get the number down here and the bid's coming low, we could do something like only build two of the streets and maybe not build the third connection, not pave it, put grade it, put stuff in, and then do that later, because if we're just running the soccer fields and that's all we're doing in this phase, we would be okay with one street going up, going over, and then connecting, because we'd still be able to loop through the parking lots and traffic would still flow. So maybe we just do the one street and not the other street. But still prep it and get it ready, so that when we go on to the next phase, then you come back in and we could pave that part. So that would be another large cost savings. I did not put a number to that, but it would be a good chunk, because we would save all the concrete, all the subgrade, and it would be another thing to look at. Not ideal, but it could be done, because you, you could operate this sports complex or this first phase under those conditions. Those are the main ideas I came up with that I wanted to discuss with you guys.
Does sanitary forced main and the lift station like you're talking about, I'm going to highly suggest we don't do that. We're going to spend more than eighteen thousand dollars to do that.
That was just the savings?
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, it's what you're going through.
Yeah, 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 yeah. It's, I mean, every pump we replace, I mean, just at the one at running field, that was fifty-six hundred bucks. I mean, so it's not going to take long, and, I mean, especially if we're getting the usage out of this like we want. So I just don't think.
So we gravity feed it to the west?
Yeah, I, what I would suggest.
Another item I'd like to point out is, when we were designing infrastructure and the systems for this area, it is to serve the sports complex and the soccer field and the future expansion. But we're also realizing, there is expansion opportunities in this whole area. We can, you can just see, there's undeveloped ground around here. So when we design it, we have to take into account that it could be expansion to the west. And they're going to want to tie on to the utilities that we need to be ready for. So it may not be in any of our near-term future, but the road could go to the west. It could be part of the city, it could be N X N. There, there's a lot of things that could happen, and we need to make sure that the infrastructure we put in now is sized and ready to handle that, so we don't have to come back in, you guys don't have to come back and upgrade that eight-inch sanitary to the ten or twelve. We want to be ready now. And if it's gravity-fed, an eight-inch public is a standard, and it would pretty much serve whatever you guys build over there, or goes over there for future development. Water main is also the same way. That's the other things we're looking at, is we're putting stubs over, we're putting things outside of paving, so that in the future, when that comes around, they can just tie it in, and it's a lot easier for in the future development.
So the items that you have that are above the possible items to bid separately, that total was one, one million four hundred, correct?
Yep.
One million four hundred dollars?
Yep, one, one point four, and that included a small contingency for items that we hope we don't have to use.
Correct. And so these cost savings options at the bottom that you took out, are all those out of that main page and a half?
Yeah, they're actually out of the one point five eight, which is the total of everything. So I had, there's like the one point four at the top, and then there's all these possible items to bid separately, that goes up to one point five eight. Then I took these cost savings out of that main total, so that would be your new total.
Okay.
And I think the way we've talked about doing this is, with the current contract or the construction bidding environment we're dealing with, which hasn't been good this year, to say the least, I'd like to do a lot of alternates. So I'd like to say, here's what we like, but then we're going to put an alternate in for a cost savings, like an asphalt versus a concrete. And, and they'll, they'll all be listed out, like they'll bid on these bid items, the contractor will, but then we'll have these alternates over the side, so you get to pick, like, hey, if we get a really good price on asphalt, we'll switch it to asphalt. Or if we get a good price on concrete, we'll switch to concrete. So we'll have these different things, and that's what we're doing for the sanitary and the water main. I talked to the city engineer, and height materials are hard to come by, and if we don't give them options, we will get even worse prices. So we've already going to give options for that. There's multiple pipes we can now allow them to use, not just ductile iron pipe or something. Doing everything we can to get better prices for bidding.
Your, your parking lot surface in the main bid is all concrete?
Yep, six inch.
Okay.
With curbing gutter.
And, and the cost production is, is not asphalt, it's like chip and dip?
That's just a chip and dip, yeah. And I'm going to check on seeing how much lower we can get that. That's, that's a typical cost right now, is like thirty percent savings, typically what you see when you go to that. And we need to just check what the current environment is showing for the asphalt itself. Asphalt changes with the economy right now. It's, it's just depending on availability and what's going on with, with all the, the climate conditions we have, and with all the supply chain issues we're having, is what's dictating the price of asphalt. So I can't say which is going to come in better when we bid. It's going to be what the environment is at that time.
I have trouble thinking about parking lot that doesn't meet the standards we require other companies, which is desperate to do, plus by the pay in the long run.
It's not great.
That, 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 yeah.
Chip and dip still counts.
Seal coats still count.
Okay, they are considered.
They are considered, that's.
Oh, okay.
Like where our streets are.
Yeah.
On the other side, though.
It's like a thick aggregate layer or a thick gravel layer, and then liquid asphalt hot pour, and then they put like a surface.
P gravel.
P gravel or something.
The irrigation system, what are the things to consider if we would do that later? Do they just trench it in?
Well, now, yes, but keep in mind, the whole purpose of this is to get grass to grow.
Yeah, because otherwise.
And see where grass. Yeah. So a perfect example of this is if you look at the football field, which is new, and then look at their practice field without irrigation on it.
Yep.
So we're having a heck of a time with half of this down here irrigated. For us to take that out, I think is, is really silly. I mean, that's the whole purpose of this, is to make sure we have a green, luscious area. And if you have a summer like what we had, it's, you know, it's actually impossible to get anything to grow.
I, I'm more inclined to go with something that in the long run is going to be the most economical. And sometimes you got to sacrifice for the short, for the short run, but I'm not in favor of doing that unless we have to.
I did speak to the gentleman who did the school irrigation system and got that field looking to do it right. I don't know if, maybe you've been over there, but it's immaculate. It's the best field that's ever been there. He's pretty confident that we can get a basic system similar to what we have over at the park now, for fifty to sixty thousand, so there would be some pretty good savings there to look at. So I, I'm hoping that as this goes, we're going to have more of this. One question I had, if, if we did do curbing gutter in the parking lot, what's the plan for then water runoff and all that?
I would put a short section of curbing gutter where the intakes are. I have a whole parking lot, short sheet flowing that direction, so I could, I could still keep that flow going that way, and then switch it to, it would still have these, it'd still have intakes there, and then we'd have like a short curve right there, just because we have to channel the flow in somewhere. So you'd have a small section where I have to treat it. Or just, actually, the other thing I'd do is just move it back just slightly, and then I could have like an irrigative drain, so it like sheet flows to that same area, no curbing gutter, and then just like a, a storm drain in the grass, and it would collect into there as opposed to a gutter system.
In your experience, because I don't mind, is, if you're going to do a chip seal, you're going to want a curbing gutter.
Yep.
Okay.
I'm just going to keep it in there.
Because otherwise it'll be like the avenues, and there's nothing to keep it in any spot. So where the curbing gutter can keeps it home, without that, it just let it slowly
So what is our goal tonight? Is our goal to say, go ahead?
Well.
Or is our goal to say, okay, we approve?
No, I think, you know, we've been talking back and forth, and I just wanted to, I know that many of you haven't seen this and, and been up to date on it, and I just wanted to let you know kind of where we're sitting with everything, as far as what we bonded for, for that first phase. I did put in my notes here, there's, there's ways that we can, you know, you got to, I don't want to take all the American Funds money towards this, but that's, that's an example of projects that you can use for the water main and for the sewer. And I know that there's other things that we need to use or would like to use that for too, but some of that is an option. I know that Drayton has a hundred fifty thousand in the set aside currently now, that they've been saving for the second phase. They'll have fifty thousand more in July. So there's two hundred thousand. So you know, there's, you know, and then the savings, you know, just fifty thousand if we can save that on the irrigation. I mean, stuff starts to add up.
Correct.
But I think we keep trying to, my opinion would be to just keep trying to work at this and keep going forward, and then eventually I think the plan is to put it out for bid this winter.
I think this, we should get it out late fall, early winter. And the reason is, is I want to get it in front of the contractors while they're still hungry, so if I wait too long, their dockets are full and their schedules are full and your prices aren't as good. So we can be one of the first ones to get out there and be given flexibility. We say, I just don't have to start till spring, or you, or you could start now if you feel like, or even over the winter, it's up to you. You're given a lot of flexibility, get it in front of them early, so they're looking at this as a project of like, ooh, I want to get this one now, I want good prices, because then I can start putting this on my schedule for spring. If we wait too long, they're already full. They're going to fill up fast. There's a lot of work out there to do there.
Right. This is important with the infrastructure, get the streets done, get that stuff that we need to get done, done now, if it's safe. It'll help us.
It'll be more expensive later.
Yeah.
I, the only problem I have with the infrastructure to those baseball fields and stuff, if, I mean, you're looking at five to seven million dollars to put those baseball fields in, and when you, we're going to find out any of that money. Did you, did you ever come up with a cost behind this guy last night?
I remember someone mentioned, I was eleven, total for everything. It's, it is probably at least five, seven for all the baseball fields. I don't have a full in front of me. As far as infrastructure for the baseball fields, at this point, all we're studying, well, we are putting storm sewer and water, but we are studying a water and sewer service to the north for the future fields, and then we're also studying one to the south for the soccer fields for the concession and the bathrooms, future bid. Also grading the building pad, where our future concession would go, but not putting anything, just getting it ready for it.
I think the idea with the second phase would be potentially kind of building a diamond here or there is not so much of a all-at-once type thing. Just slowly evolve that, but, you know, kind of view that, I think it's important to get as much of this done as we can.
Yeah.
On this first part now.
Because you're laying the foundation right now.
Yep, I agree.
Where we're going forward. And like a lot of us have said in the past, that, you know, this council's going to change a couple of times between now and then. If we have a good foundation built now, we don't have to worry about, you know, later on down the road, a big change in mind or a big change in plan or anything like that, so.
I like the idea of bidding out some smaller things, sold over to people.
Yeah.
Take advantage, maybe get a little cheaper price too. And how much would we be saving on eliminating the one street or not doing it at this time, figuring?
If really, just, just, just looking at what the roadway costs right now, if I have a roadway, all the cumulative cost of the roadway was four hundred seventy-four thousand. If I eliminate one street, that's a third, so we would eliminate a third of that. So we'd say it's almost five, maybe a couple hundred thousand dollars, just, just in the roadway alone.
That, that might be something to consider.
I, I agree. I, I think it's an option if we need to save money now.
Yeah.
The only thing I do worry about is, it won't be cheaper next year. Which is, is the, is the dollar shortage. You want to do it now, until we go out in money?
It could be more expensive next year.
Yeah, it, it, I mean, a few years from now, it will be more expensive.
And is that street going all the way to Washington?
Yeah, there, it's, but there's a gate. They wanted to, this was designed beforehand, but the thought was to keep that as like an emergency access and not have all that traffic go by those residential. But I don't, that was already decided.
Okay.
When I started into this, I don't know the reasonings and all that behind it, but there's a gate going to be across Third, but the road will be there, if that makes sense.
It's designed to connect.
Yeah.
It can connect it anytime.
Yeah.
With a little bit of removal and some pavement. But at this point, and, and earlier, it was just, no, we are not going across there, so we, we were told not to put that there.
Property owners didn't want all the traffic going down there at the time.
What road on there are you eliminating? The one on the east side, North South Road?
No, I would keep that one. I have to keep that.
Okay.
Because there would be that one.
Wallon.
What?
Wallon. So the one they would be eliminating is just that, go up, right?
Just that stretch, we stop right there if we decided, because you could all, everything could be served from this, yep, from this one. And the reason I was.
Well, I thought you were going all the way around.
We are.
We are.
Was that?
We are.
The east one, right?
Now, is it, is it a potential to perhaps never do Wallon?
Yep.
And do Third instead?
Yep. But.
Well, I mean, Third's part of it, right?
Well, I'm saying, I'm saying. That is, but it's not going, and so the plan was when Drayton and I and Connie all set it down way back then. So this is.
That's Third, right?
Yeah. But you see what Third actually is. So we'd have to.
Draw that too?
Yeah, we'd have to make that, which would be no big deal, but these, these property owners didn't want the traffic going through, because technically this street would have to be widened with, and then this corner house on Washington would lose almost all of theirs, if you look at how it's wider.
Ideally, it would be nice for flow to have the connection at Third.
Oh, definitely.
It would be ideal, but it, it was an issue that was just set out.
So you're saying the only entrance and exit that we would be using are the two that go on each side of the lines, at least?
One thing, our interest rate is low, so it might be cheaper in the long run to do what we can now, lock in those prices at a low interest rate. Now, she could run what it would take to go in the Third, keep in mind with.
Keep in mind with our water main project anyways, that intersection of Third and Washington is gonna be tore up anyways. So we're gonna need to redo most of that anyways, so you're gonna wanna tie in, that's the time.
So what are we gonna do? And this is kinda awkward, because as I think about it, what are we gonna do about the increased traffic flow on both of those streets from Main Street? Because that one goes, you know, that goes down that hill and then back up again to get to that street to heat up there. And those are, yeah, those are kinda narrow streets too, right?
Yeah, there's nothing we're gonna be able to do with Jefferson.
Okay.
Which is kinda landlocked, right?
You almost have to bring in two Walnut Street also.
The more streets in and out of the area, the less traffic.
Per street.
Personally.
I mean, ideally, traffic flow wise, GPS would take you down Washington, down Third, rather be the best.
Right.
It's quickest route.
I think that's gonna be your...
That's gonna be the most...
...passenger door, except for people like, maybe live, my brother or whatever, may go Jefferson, or could go down south, or whatever. But, um... But we've also, I mean, that's also something just to look at, is just to see, hey, you know, if we're gonna do Third, maybe just do that whole section of Third curb and gutter.
Yeah, all the way from Washington back.
Over to it to tie into this and not do Walnut now, maybe, then you got a way in and out. I don't know if I like the idea of just one way into this place and, you know, one way out, but...
Not for Third, it's not ideal. But the reason it would work is because a fire truck or a large vehicle, which is what we always have to design for, could loop through the parking lot.
I see.
If we didn't have that parking lot designed, we would have to put this huge ninety-foot diameter, like roundabout, or cul-de-sac in order for a fire truck to make it turn. We don't wanna do that. Or we'd have to connect to Third.
Well, I think...
Well, that's to answer your question. This is just more for your information, just to give you an idea of where we're at with it.
And then when we get ready to go out for bid, we'll come back again.
A lot of the public hearing.
We visit.
Yeah, there'll be full bid docks, you guys have to look it up.
So do you want her to look into Third?
I don't think so.
I don't think it's a bad idea.
I don't either.
I mean, just as your option.
I know that the owners aren't gonna be happy about it. And, you know, that's...
Are the same people still living there that...
One already moved.
Yes.
One that was very adamant against the party's move and anticipation.
You're not gonna make everybody happy all the time.
Well, the thing, the thing about though, is if we do this now, we're gonna go to the west at some point.
Yes, you are.
And we need to be ready for that.
Yeah.
You know what I mean, so...
Hopefully so.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's really your only street.
Yeah.
Into that area, to be honest.
And there, 'cause there's nothing even north of that, is there?
No, well, it's fourth, it's a hers.
It's the railroad tracks. Fox car children.
It has potential for prime residential, because it's gonna be located next to recreational fields. It's going to be very slow active. We have to handle that.
So, another question I have with, are we, we're not doing anything with electric or anything like that. This is just our concrete water sewer.
We are still doing that, but that's another separate thing to Alliance. Because the way they prorate you is they put in, like, you will have streetlights throughout, and the parking lot lights. And we're saving money by putting the parking lot lights on the backside to a couple of streetlights. So we don't have to put full parking lot lighting, it'll still work for the parking lots. And that'll be metered through Alliance. And because you guys pay a monthly fee for those, they put them in for you. So that's covered. There are gonna be some other expenses related to anticipation of the future fields. Future ballpark fields are gonna need preface power. They have, if lighting goes in, they have a really high power demand. So we would put in more than a traditional line or a streetlight. This would be like high voltage lines. But we put them underground and just get them ready. So we're looking at putting those in now, they're at least gonna have utility easement. So in the future, they have spots if we don't wanna put them in right now. And Alliance determining when, when this could potentially go online is how they determine what they charge you or don't charge you for it. So if it's like in the near term, they put it in, you guys pay your rates, 'cause you're gonna use their electricity. If it's too far out, they may charge you upfront costs to put some of that infrastructure in, and we're still talking with them about it. And there'll also be a couple of things like future transformers and utility boxes for the concession stand. We'll at least have those ready and prepped to go, and Alliance will have those ready, so that it's just plug and play in the future.
The only reason I ask is 'cause, you know, I, we listened to, and last week talked a lot about the nature park itself. And I assume that we have planned for some lighting along the trails there.
Yeah, I would think if, yeah, once we get a trail, you'd have to have a, some sort of...
We gotta be prepared for that area as well.
You will have electric run all the streets. If, whatever streets we put in, they're gonna put underground to feed those holes and stuff. And then they'll put the lines in to prep for future connections to like the nature park coming through.
I know that I talked to you before about the lights that we take down from the park that would go over the complex. We are working with Alliance to get those put up for us. So, we're gonna be using the lights right away, so...
Okay. So, yeah, I just wanna make sure that we are thinking about the nature park as well. Because we need to, I mean, I know it's not on this face, but we do need to start thinking about it. Because it is a space that can be used right now. And we should take advantage of that with at least a trail, some type of a trail with lighting. You know, that'll be people to go out there to. And that will also increase their excitement for sports complexes as well. They'll be more apt to say, "Hey, I wanna see that," if they don't need, so...
More goals?
I thank you for your time.
I hope this was helpful.
Yes, it was.
I wanted to explain this all to you last week, but this is what I wanted to tell you all.
This puts a lot of things in perspective for us, I think. It does for me, I guess.
You and Brandon work on some more. Yeah, like glau and fall, early, early, early winter, beds and everything.
Yeah.
We'll make it happen.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Discussion most likely on accepting quotes for furniture repairs on city properties. So this is through Lifetime Fence. This was quoted long ago. He just got back to contact with me, and he's ready to do the install. Wants to get as much done this fall as possible. There's a privacy fence around the Grand Avenue circle that apparently continues to fall down. We have concerns with kids getting in there, so we constantly monitor that when the wind gets high, just to keep putting that back up. So as you can see in here, we received twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty-three dollars from insurance for these three properties. And the bill is twenty-one, six forty-five, so it's cheaper than what we've already received from insurance.
Devotion?
Motions.
Second.
Devotion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Discussion plus location on Old Dunbar.
We tried selling this thing a while back, if you remember, accepting bids on it, couldn't get anything. I tried to find a reasonable price, somebody to haul it off and just haul it to one of the scrap yards. And even with metal prices the way they are, it's gonna cost us money to get rid of it. I did have a couple scrapper's here locally say, "Hey, they come get rid of it." You know, just make it disappear, that's what you guys wanted to do. I think if they're gonna haul it off, I'm removing it from...
No one wants it, never. It's a problem that one's paying for it.
Yeah, I mean, it's...
We're not gonna get paid for it.
Right.
We do still have liability insurance, although it's not much, but there's still insurance on it, just 'cause it's our property, on our property, so...
And I guess I get rid of it.
I mean, use it for anything, I'll never try to save it.
No, that's, I mean, it's just that as we were always trying to get, we thought somebody would purchase it. And then after the Dray show, went through the windshield and stuff, kinda, kinda deterred a lot of people.
Yeah.
I wonder why.
So, no, I just wanna get the eyesore away from the shop, we're trying to get stuff ready for winter.
Motion?
Make a motion to get rid of it.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing for business thirty, sidewalk improvement bids.
Motion to go to public hearing, second.
Motion is second, Sarah?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
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 Dave, you there?
I am here. This is just procedural. We've gone through this on this project, variation of this project a couple of times in the past. This is just a public hearing for input from the public on the replacement sidewalk at Washington and Business Thirty.
Anybody got any questions? Motion go to public hearing?
Motion.
Second.
Travis?
Aye.
Dave? John?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
We'll move on to the next item after this.
Public hearing first.
There's no action to that. We go in, we come out.
Public hearing on Foot Business Thirty, catcher pairs.
Motion to go to public hearing, second.
Travis?
Aye.
Dave?
Sarah?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Dave?
This is the same thing, and this is for patching on Business Thirty. There are five areas that we're looking to patch. This also has an alternate bid for the turn lane that we discussed, as we had eastbound at Washington Street to turn south. That is put into this project. So the estimate is seventy-five thousand for the patching, and a hundred and sixty thousand if we decide to add the turn lane. So this is a public hearing, a chance for public to comment on this project as well.
Drayton, you got anything? Nathan?
No.
Motion to go out of public hearing.
Second.
Motion is second, Sarah?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Thanks.
First one, I'm sorry, next to me.
I have nothing for that tonight. All right, City Engineer Board, Dave?
So we are still waiting for DNR to look at a few issues on the communication to get our site survey real well. I've emailed again to try to get that communication from their home office and field office to move forward. And then coordinating slightly with YTT as we work through the plans on the ballpark as well. Looking at options for placing the chemical feed building that we would need for that well. So we are continuing to work on that as well as the water main improvements projects. And then following the public hearings tonight on the Business Thirty, we'll be receiving bids for those shortly. And I should have that back when you have the next conference, and you can consider bids on that. That's all I have.
You got anything for Dave?
No, thank you, Dave.
Public Service Director report.
Dave, you still there?
I am.
All right, you wanna just give me a call tomorrow? I wanna talk about that, I don't know what you heard with the sports complex and tying into Third. I had a couple of questions for you on that.
Okay. Yep, I was present for that entire discussion, so up to speed on it.
Okay, perfect. Other than that, I got Public Works and Park and Rec got the windmill put up at the pond for irrigation. I've built grain bins faster in that windmill, so I don't think we'll purchase another one. We've also, we've got twenty-seven of our roughly thirty trees planted for our grant. We had two of them we set on by the practice field. We had two pine trees we put by the practice field on the school with kindergarten class today. So we had our little photo op with them and got all that going. And they got a kick out of trying to dig through concrete, 'cause that's pretty much what the ground's like. So, other than that, we're gonna be getting the leaf, leaf back out and starting to make sure that's ready to go. So, that's about it.
Questions for Travis?
Where are we with the tree removals, cut down trees? Do we have more trees that we need to cut down?
We've got quite a few more. Brandon and I have been doing counts.
Okay.
We've gotta wait, I think you said that off, didn't you?
Yep.
So we gotta wait to see what insurance says. I'm waiting for a bid on the four pine trees in the cemetery. You've been on long enough, you know, we've been talking about this for as long as I've been here. Started way back with Tony, and now it's getting to be three of the four really have to come down. And we're gonna pay for the crane, might as well take the fourth. So we're losing limbs out of it like that every time the wind blows it down. So we're actually kinda leaving most of the limbs there, so it acts as a sponge. So if it does hit some of the stones, hopefully it can protect them more than hurt them. So hopefully I have that for you by that. I mean, time, we're, we've got a million things. I mean, this, our list is, I wish it was small, but every time we put something on the list, I mean, there's seven things that go with that one thing, so...
So are there any more city trees within the city limits here that are...
You could go to them?
Yeah, possible.
Yeah.
Very, very easy. I'm sorry?
About eighty.
About eighty?
Yeah.
Okay.
Was that a shocking number, Travis, you know? About eighty?
We're about a fourth of the way through the two-hundred-and-fifty stumps of the ones that are now...
I was just gonna ask you how the stump removals...
So, well, that's, that's what I mean though, is, so, and that's what we also tried to explain in the last meeting too, is, you know, we've got these stump removals which take time, and we have trees that we need to cut down. And so at what point do you, you pick and choose? So that's why some of the stumps in the parks have gotten left, and we've spent our time elsewhere. So it's a juggling act that Brandon and I tried to work through. So, I mean, if we, if you see us doing something and you wonder why we're doing that instead of this, it's a frustration.
How many, do we know how many stumps are at the park over here?
I think there is three.
Oh, okay.
And one of them...
Just for the record, I didn't know.
One of them they ripped out, so now they're down to two.
Okay.
Yeah. We, so when we were setting the windmill, we needed the mini excavator there. Well, when I was waiting for the truck to dump, I tracked the mini excavator over and removed one of the stumps.
Oh, okay. Well, 'cause I know Steve was, he mentioned that. So I was just, for the record, I didn't know if you guys knew how many stumps were there. Minimal?
Yeah.
There's two more that I counted, but there may have been another one somewhere that I didn't count.
But, like I said, and I understand this frustration, but on the other side too is, you know...
You have a list, to-do list every day, and it changes. It's, and that was, and it's fine.
The goal is to get the stumps done, dirt in, and seeded by the end of fall. That's our goal in order to, that's our, that's our goal is to keep plugging away at that.
So at what point will we, at what point would we say, "Okay, let's pay the trees or service to come in?"
We, we are. I have Si coming in, I can slot it for two days. 'Cause we can get, whether we take down one tree or a hundred trees in that day, our price break has always been to take them for the day.
Okay.
But he's so busy that he's trying to work me in to give me two days, and then we'll see how much we can get done. And at that point...
And that's also turned into a church, right?
The way it sounded, you were, guys, you're trying to do it all by yourself, and I'm like, this is not...
They're doing the stump, they're doing the stump.
The stump, and there's some, there's some trees that we are gonna try to do. Because I think whether, you know, as long as I'm comfortable with trees, so standing there, yeah, it may need to come down. But if it's not a hazard, I would rather pay a contractor to do the bigger ones that, you know, we can't do. And have them spend their time on that, so...
Yeah.
And I said, this is, we spent quite a bit of time on it. We've sent off our signs too, almost a hundred signs we need to replace and down from this. I mean, so there's, I mean, we're gonna be, we've got plenty of work to do for quite a long time. And that's our, our other fears, I wanna make sure we get all these ends tied up before we do start with these projects.
Yeah.
'Cause we're gonna be busy with this stuff, so...
And I'm just, you know, I was worried about, you get some winter storms come through, we got bad trees, you know? We gotta keep that in mind too, so...
I do have a documented, within reason of, you know, the ones that are partially dead, split, completely dead, you know, this is a good time, you can see the ones that have lost their leaves long ago, or maybe not even, didn't have leaves, so. We're trying to prioritize, but also if you got one that maybe not in too bad shape, but they're right there, you might as well take that down with it since they're there, so, yeah, it's kind of a balance, but then we'll have to. All right.
Oh, you're doing on the city's ash trees, is that a lot of the ones that are dead, because I just had, Si just took two out on my property.
Right, um, we were, before the DRA show, we were ahead of the game, we're really ahead of the game, but between the DRA show and then this dry year, what our projected lifespan of these trees were, I feel, were cut dramatically, so. Um, there's a lot of them that need to come down, there's only a handful of ones that are, are ones we can't reach with our truck, so that's part of, in this couple of days here and there, we can get Si. But those are more of the winter time, or late fall when it's raining every other day, he can work off the street, so he can still work here, where instead of going into your yard, you can tear up everything, so. That's what, just trying to get most bang for our buck.
That's great, you took two trees, and you didn't go in my yard at all, wouldn't the two neighbors hurt some? I did.
Everybody else have any questions for Travis?
I do not.
Thanks, Travis, Park and Rec Director.
Um, fall soccer and fall flag football are wrapping up, we've got about two weeks left until all age groups are completely done. And we will be transitioning into girls' basketball, registration started on Monday, and that'll start at the end of October and November, so. I told you guys I would bring back, I met with my board on Monday of last week, um, and we decided we're going to do the thirteen days of Halloween, starting the nineteenth, going until the thirty-first. We've got a couple of groups that already have ideas, um, for a day, so we'll give like the library, for instance, they're going to do a Halloween, um, story over Facebook Live one of the days. We've got a couple of other groups that are going to get involved, and then obviously the Park and Rec Board's got ideas for things to do on other days. Um, and then we'll throw together some, uh, Halloween buckets to pick a winner each day of that thirteen days. Other than that, I think that is all I have.
So, would you say that your turnout for soccer, flag football were good before?
Yeah, they're good, the fall is usually always a little bit, um, on the downside for numbers, the springs are big one, um, for soccer, but when you put flag football and soccer together, I mean, I still get pretty good numbers. It's growing every year, so more and more kids, um, they weren't really well. Uh, well, also, one more thing, we're going to decorate, my committee, as well as my Park and Rec Board are going to decorate the downtown on Saturday, this coming Saturday, the second, at noon. And then I'm going to work with Travis and the maintenance department to, uh, get up the skull, the skull heads and the pumpkin heads that we put on the lights downtown, so those will hopefully be up on Friday, um, as long as they don't have too much falling on, so.
They're not.
I think that's all I've got, though.
Thank you.
Any questions for David? That's ready. District Department Report.
Doug, uh, couldn't be here tonight, and he said he did not have anything for him.
All right, chief.
Um, nothing fire-related.
City Administrator.
Uh, I've been working on the end of the year financial report, um, we'll have a public hearing, probably the first week in November, and get that submitted to December first, so, um, I should post that up today. I have a call tomorrow with the foreman, reference the history center and the library, first stabilization with the immediate repairs, um, the lifts are gone, so I think they're wrapping up what their work that they were doing for that, so I'll be meeting with him tomorrow. Um, as we talked already, even working with EMC Insurance, reference trees and, uh, street signs, trying to finish up the, uh, claim. Uh, meeting with the school, uh, school board requests that the meeting be December first, uh, this way it gives the new board and council, if they want to be present, it'll be after the election, and they can be involved with that if they so choose. I went to the league conference a couple of weeks ago, um, they did scratch the American Funds discussion, that was really what I was going for. But I did go to a class in the morning on community development and planning for the future, which I thought was really good, um, and then in the afternoon, I did the, uh, management of first responders, stress, burnout, and male health, and those are pretty good, so. Um, and then just letting you all know that I will be gone for the October eleventh meeting on vacation, and I will prep you for the meeting, there probably won't be a lot on there, but.
Not getting on Zoom?
Probably not. Unless you absolutely want me to.
No, because I'm going to be right there with you, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not getting on Zoom.
So, meeting there with schools is December first?
Wednesday, December first.
They might be asking you to reschedule that, because last Wednesday they did their work session for their superintendent search, and that Wednesday, December first, was the best date for that, for that.
Good thing you're here.
Yeah.
Call me to tell me, so, um, I'll, I'll double check that.
We'll revisit that.
I know that they wanted to do it in December, just because it's after the election.
I mean, we could, I was going to say we could do it December sixth, that's rather Monday night. I'll, I'll follow.
Well, it's at the school this time, right? Last year we hosted, last time we hosted it, so it's at the school, so.
All right, anybody else have anything for Brandon?
I don't know. Thank you, Brandon.
John Sorek, Travis.
Um, just wanted to remind everybody that, um, there are council and school board elections this year, so, um, be mindful of that. If you have an interest in it, get your paperwork in.
I think it's.
Too late, okay?
Yep.
Shut up. Get your due.
Oh, good.
I think that's the ninth, the second Tuesday, right?
No, it's the first Tuesday.
Um, also, I wanted to just remind everybody, like Anne said last week with, you know, the nature center up at the nature park, been thinking about that, and I know, you know, you all want to put the well out there, and I want to make sure that we don't forget that that's what we want it to be as a nature area. We need to get the trail out there, let people, let people have a place to go, um, especially those doing all the other improvements out there, I can't forget about that as well, so, um, you know, got to keep in mind, Steve has to look at that every day, you know, puts out his back window. So, we need to do what we can to try and get that clean back up again, so, and I know you guys will work on it, don't get me wrong, I just want to make sure you guys, make sure it's private out there. That's it.
Anything?
Uh, I don't have anything at this time.
John?
I'm happy to see you guys are on top of everything, thank you. That's all I have.
I don't have anything, I will be gone the next meeting as well, so.
All right, so if anybody else.
I have not missed a meeting yet, if I may add, so.
So, making sure we have enough for the forum.
Yeah.
And I don't have anything. Meeting adjourned.